You do what, you go to staff, they were all, they don't believe in that man.
Come on, man, you do it this way.
Are you broken over there?
No. Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening or late afternoon. At this time, six oh two, and August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, this is a work session, and everyone here, thank you, thank you for counsel, and our staff for this meeting, and hopefully we enjoy this meeting today. At the beginning of the meeting will be the visitor citizen forum. At this moment, I got one application for Mr. Jack Lewis, would you please come up here, sir? Please state your name, and I know we know you, but for record.
Thank you, I'm Jack Lewis, I live at four thousand six hundred Savelle, here in Holton City. And I want to first thank all of you for your service. And I want to especially thank Ms. Van Zant, she asked the council staff, after I requested, that we look into this drainage tax on our water bills for the elderly and disabled, again. Last year, the council, the older, the council last year, it failed to pass, but I wanted to make it again, to a new council, a new mayor. And we appreciate the staff, and I didn't really mean, in fact, I just read the results. I didn't get it on my computer, I'm not, I got a computer, but I want to thank you, I got your, you asked the staff to look into what it meant financially to the city on this year, I think it's seven dollar on the water bill. If it was, of course, I didn't, I just now read part of it, but it dealt with the tax freeze. We're not talking about the tax freeze, we're talking about the drainage tax was placed on our water bills within three months after the citizens voted all over Texas to freeze the tax, the ever-lowering tax, on the elderly and the disabled. It passed eighty-three percent, I remember this, you can check the records, here in Tarrant County. Now, the county would not freeze it, the, the state constitution was changed to allow cities, all taxing entities, to give the tax freeze, or the citizens had right to petition. Well, the county, we petitioned, people in Arlington, about three or four of us, and it passed by eighty-three percent after we, we did the petition, no, no, they had to vote before then, of course. But anyway, the county, the county, all of them froze it, all five taxing entities, except the, I call it the welfare hospital one, what is it, JPS. They're still not frozen. And we do still pay taxes, the seniors do. Now, my only thought, now, I know you, you came up about three pages, the bar charts and all this stuff, and the, God bless Ross Perot, he could take these charts and make them sound good or bad, depending on what they're wanting. Anyway, all I'm doing is simply asking this council to consider to remove the drainage fee, drainage tax, whatever, from the water bills, only seven dollars, and I don't know, I do know that this last year, the financial report, I can go by my memory, so, you know, when they put new meters in, it brought in, quote, I forget how many, hundreds of thousands of dollars more, just with the new meters. And I know that's true, because I use seventy percent, this is the data from Fathom. I use seventy percent less water this year than I did in two thousand eighteen, but I'm paying twenty-one percent more. And that's not, that's reasonable, I suppose, I wish it was lower. But I will say revenue increased by the city by as much, and I'm going in the head here, by as much as this drainage tax on the water bill. Now, revenue, I know all your staff, you love revenue, and we don't talk about cutting expenses, but I can tell you where you could cut the amount of expenses that are lower priority than people who are on a social security of less than a thousand a month, and there's some mainly widers came up here last year, before the council, on their water bills. So they're making, now, a guy that's making a hundred thousand, it's hard for them to associate themselves with someone making eighteen, maybe seventy thousand a year. But I'm just simply asking that you consider it, which evidently you had from the PowerPoint presentation, all, you got, not PowerPoint, but you got three pages of data, and you compare yourselves like we all do with our neighbors. This goes on no matter what we do, but I'm not interested in what Hurst is doing, what Northridge and Hills is doing. I am, because I got kids out there. But I am interested in the people here making less than, a lot of you make, I'd say less than any of you making, less than twenty thousand, and even less than ten thousand per year, to consider this. Thank you, and thank y'all for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis, and I wish you stay here, no, 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 I mean, in the meeting, because later on, we have the staff report, and you might learn more information about that, please, sir. Thank you. Is anyone else would like to speak, Mr. Watkins? Welcome aboard, sir.
Hello, Watkins. And Mr. Lewis have discussed this before God and everybody on several occasions. The stormwater fee was set up, and in my opinion, at the time, it was set about a dollar too low. If it had been set at around six dollars in two thousand three, it would probably be, still be under six dollars, because we started out behind. One of the things I liked better or bad than anything, and, and by the way, when that, and the senior tax freeze were, I've voted against this, against that as well, because, and I was sixty-five, so I get the right to vote on that. But the stormwater fee, I could see it all coming, because we started out behind, and if you put it in, if you put it in with the, with the, everything else, your taxes gonna go up, but the stormwater fee is paid by the schools, and the churches, and everybody, it's not, and so if you remove it, if you remove it and put it over to where things are, entities that are non-tax, we're gonna have to pay, we're gonna have to make up for that. So as you said, y'all are gonna discuss it later, but I thought, you know, I wanted to let Jack get him to talk without me rebutting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins.
Is anyone else in the audience would like to speak on visitor season forum? At this time, I see none, I will close the visitor forum at six oh nine. Okay. We don't have any more on the work session, we will review on the regular agenda, by the way, Mr. Wayne, we have any executive session?
Yes, Mayor, you do.
Okay, at this time.
You can do the financial report now, if you want to.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, ma'am, financial report, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've been looking at years' worth of numbers, so we'll kind of take a step back and just look at the month, because I'm reporting the month of July for you in our monthly financial report. When you look at the overall fund summary of all funds, our revenues year-to-date for the month of July is at four point eight mil, and then our year-to-date total in revenue is sixty-nine point one million. On the expenditure side, in July, we were at five point nine, but our year-to-date is fifty-two point eight, which means our expenditures are less than our revenue, which is always a good thing. When you look at just the general fund, year-to-date totals is twenty-six point four, and then compared to twenty-four point four on the expenditure side, so again, revenues exceed expenditures. This is a chart that shows our property tax revenue, so our year-to-date property tax revenue is nine million three hundred eighty thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars. And this just compares what we budgeted month-to-month compared to the actual. So the budgeted line would be the green line, actual is purple. On the sales tax side, year-to-date, we've brought in eight million seven hundred seven thousand four hundred forty-two dollars. And again, this just, we kind of do a guesstimation based on prior year's history to compare budget over actual. But I want to show you the chart that tells a little bit more, and we've had some discussion about our sales tax dropping, and so I want to show you what that looks like, starting with May, we had a three point three two percent decrease over the prior year. We had a slight increase in June of less than three percent, but then we had a pretty significant decrease in the month of July. When I start seeing things like this and start analyzing the numbers and the reasons why, this is one of the reasons why I went back and I changed our twenty-twenty budget numbers, because we had, we had budgeted for a three percent increase for next year. And if I start seeing things like this happen now, that might be a bit too much, so we scaled that back to two percent. Now, we have, since I prepared this, we have received the August numbers, and in August, we had, we saw another decrease in sales tax to three point three nine percent decrease. So you'll see that when I do my August report next month in detail. And we do compare ourselves to some of our neighbors, this is something we look at each month, and it, it looks like there's some decreases in other areas, not just Holton City. So I think it's important to see that when we have a, a month with a decrease like that, and of course, previous to this, we were seeing increases of that amount each month. And so that's July in a quick snapshot, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have related to the monthly financials.
Counsel, you have any question for Mr. Faust? I see none, thank you, you did a good job, appreciate that.
Thank you.
At this time, we move to the, we don't have anymore. At this time, the council will reset into the executive session, based on the government code, five fifty-one, section five fifty-one oh seven one, and five fifty-one oh seven two. We'll be back at seven. At six forty. At six forty.
The House of Commons.
Free cameras, okay.
At this time, August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, seven oh seven, I call the meeting in order. Before we conduct the business, invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Marion Hillier. Ma'am.
Dear Lord, thank you for the blessing and care you give us every day. We give praise to you and your son, Jesus. Please continue to give us your love and protection, especially for those who protect our nation and our city. Guide this council in their decision-making tonight in an effort to provide for the city and the citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Welcome everyone here for the meeting, second meeting of August two thousand and nineteen, can you believe it? We just, I mean, time fly, but by the way, I'm glad that we have a lot of people here today. And welcome everyone, and thank you for a step. And the City Council, we are missing one of the council play too, Mr. Watercrow. He on duty in somewhere, we don't know, may he call police. But by the way, right now, at the announcement and event, Mr. Secretary Al Camacho.
Thank you, Mayor, announcements for August twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, in the public library, they have teen programs, family movie nights, summer reading program, adult GED ESL classes. And other library activities are all listed on the library's website for their dates and times, so please check the website. They're having a flea market called a Flea For All two point O that will be held Saturday, September fourteenth, from nine AM to six PM. And Dave Lieber, who is a noted journalist and author, will also be featured on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, at eleven AM at the library. In community programs, the park and recreation has a registration for soccer for boys and girls ages three to twelve. It has been extended to Saturday, August thirty-first. They have a limited number of spots available, and it will fill up fast, and coaches are also needed. So please contact the rec center for more information or to sign up your children. Keep Halton City Beautiful is hosting the second annual Fall Sweep and the twenty-nineteen Trinity Trash Bash on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, from nine AM to twelve PM, in the east parking lot at Halton High School. The Fall Sweep will offer free paper shredding, up to four file boxes, free tire recycling, up to four tires, no commercial or tractor tires, and information on their simply recycling program. This service is free to all Halton City residents, so please bring your water bill and ID as proof of residency. After or before you drop off your stuff at the Fall Sweep, you can volunteer at Keep Halton City Beautiful, annual Trinity Bash, which is the same time and the same place. Registered volunteers will receive T-shirts and snacks, and all cleanup supplies will be provided. Register to volunteer at the city website at www.haltoncitytx.com. And for more information, please contact the rec center at eight one seven eight three one six four six four. The C E R T classes, CERT classes, the twenty-nineteen classes will begin September ninth. And CERT volunteers are a vital component of the Halton City Fire Department. Skills learned in the CERT classes include basic preparedness, knowing what to do, light search and rescue, and fire safety, and basic first aid, GPS training, damage assessment, training, and more. Applicants must be eighteen years of age or older, and are subject to a background check. Online applications can be found at the city website, or if you have any questions, you may contact Fire Marshal Damon Vogel at eight one seven seven five nine eight six six three. And that's our announcements for the nightmare.
Thank you for Mr. Camacho for the announcement and events. At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Lynn Thompson. We try to recognize Mr. Jim Jimbo White legacy, and Ms. Thompson. We would like to invite the family of Mr. Jimbo White, approach the podium.
Mayor and council, what a privilege it is and an honor. I would like to recognize James Jimbo White for his service to our city and community. This is a certificate of recognition to honor the family, James Jimbo White. Whereas, it is a rare occasion when Halton City has an opportunity to posthumously honor a citizen for such outstanding and tenured service. Whereas Halton City has such a citizen in James Jimbo White, who during his thirty-year employment with the Union Pacific Railroad, began his service with Halton City on the zoning board of adjustments on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and one, serving for seventeen years. And whereas Jimbo also served on the charter review in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, the bond committee of two thousand and one, and the Veterans Memorial in two thousand and sixteen. And whereas, besides being a father and a grandfather, he was achieved numerous accolades in regards to his employment and associations. Now, therefore, on behalf of our mayor, Ann Trong, and on behalf of the Halton City Council and all the citizens, wish to publicly recognize, thank, and honor James Jimbo White for his commitment and service to the Halton City community.
One more time, I know we will miss him. One of the person that I have learned he been in Halton City for many years, from the serving, especially on GPA for over twenty-some years, right, twenty-three years. One of a man that I did not have more opportunity to meet him earlier. But by the way, he will be missed by all of us. Thank you. Okay, next would be concern agenda, which one? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we got the presentation for long-term employee service award and by Mr. Tony Beckett, Director of HR. Where are you, ma'am?
She's not going to come up here, Mayor. We've got quite a few long-term, long-term service awards tonight. Leslie, do you want to go first?
Okay, so that I can really embarrass you, you have to turn around.
Thank you. I knew this wasn't going to work well.
Hi, I'm Leslie Smith. This is Diane Elrod, and we're from the public library. We are honoring Diane Elrod for her twenty years of service with the Halton City Public Library. She started on August sixth, nineteen ninety-nine, so this month is her twentieth anniversary, and I would love for you all to give her a round of applause, please.
Captain Irvin, you want to come up and do the police department?
Smiling Cop. Thank you.
I'm the smiling cop?
Smiling Cop and Cop-ten.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I appreciate that. I am the smiling cop and... I have two police department employees to recognize. The first officer has worked for the city for twenty years, and is currently working as a patrol officer. Please help me recognize Officer Vicki Harden for twenty years of dedicated service. Okay, the next officer has worked for the city for twenty-five years, is currently serving as patrol captain over night operations. Please help me recognize and congratulate Captain Robert Shiflett for twenty-five years of service.
Chief Jacobs, you're up.
Welcome Chief.
Thank you Mayor, Council. Uh, I get the privilege to uh, introduce Lieutenant Ben Derrick Wood, if you'd come on up. Uh, Lieutenant Wood and I hired on about the same time, so we kind of watched each other grow up. Lieutenant Wood uh, has been involved in several of our community programs. He's been firefighter of the year on two different occasions in two thousand one and two thousand eleven. He served on the rescue team and I believe you're on one of the task force as well, aren't you? Um, so needless to say, uh, he's had a busy twenty years. Um, I may ask you to give a speech, so be prepared, but um, but either way, congratulations on twenty years of service.
So only one you had?
That's all you have?
Alright, that's all, right, Tony? Yeah, I got one, I just want to make sure we were done. Um, if you were here last week or you were watching, you, I had the honor and the opportunity to, to recognize Glenna as the planning director and her long service to the city. This week I have the same honor, um, we have emphasized the last four years in our employee culture that we look within the organization first for any appointments, promotions, transfers or reassignments and it has really, really paid off for us in the, in the talent that we have moved up through the organization. Um, so tonight I want to recognize Chief Brian Jacobs for twenty years of service. He's the second fire chief that I've appointed in my short time as city manager. Uh, when Chief Bonham decided that he was gonna retire, it took me about ten seconds to figure out who the next chief was gonna be. That's how highly I think of Chief Jacobs and I can't tell you how proud I am of the fire department and what, what's happened in their internal culture the last few years and, and Chief Jacobs has been a, you know, driving force in that. So Brian, I'll meet you down here to recognize your twenty years of service.
Thank you Chief, you have anything to say or sing?
Uh, yeah, sure, um.
Sing a song?
I guess since you asked, um, you know, it, 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 it's an honor to, to be able to serve in the community that you were born and raised in. Um, you know, I remember the first day I, I hired on as a firefighter, you know, I was looking at behind the old fire station too, thinking, man, this is cool, I'm a Halton City fireman. You know, I grew up in the town, I knew the town, you know, didn't realize that uh, I would wind up quite in this position, so you know, I'm very humbled, very honored, I appreciate the, the opportunity and, um, you know, I'd, there's several people I could, I could think I could be up here all day thinking, all kinds of people, but a couple special ones that are here tonight that I would like to recognize is, is uh, my wife and my daughter. Uh, they're in the crowd, you know, my wife Celeste, we've been married nearly as long. Uh, our twenty-year anniversary will be next year, and then my daughter, um, you know, they've had to put up with me and and some, some long days, some long shifts and, uh, you know, so I, I appreciate that and yeah, that's really all I got, I just appreciate the opportunity.
May you introduce your wife so people know. Thank you Chief. Uh, we supposed to have one more recognition for Bobby Arthur, the Director of Senior Seasons Center, but uh, she was on vacation, right? Okay, we are here working and she enjoy vacation, but we will see her next time, she can get away from us. Now we go to concern agenda, we got item number two, Minus, and number three, Signatory, and uh, Council, you have any question or comment on Minus and item number three, Signatory? And Mr. Faust will be here to answer your question. I have seen none, so this two item ready for motion? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Weish, you are?
I need to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items two and three.
Thank you Councilman Wee, now, Mr. Lynn Thompson.
Mayor, that would be for a second.
Thank you, we got the second and please Resha, your vote. We got unanimous approval except the missing uh, Mr. Watercrow and we move to the regular agenda, item number four, proposed FY two thousand twenty budget. Uh, Director of Financial, Mr. Faust, go ahead.
Thank you Mayor and Council. Uh, you've seen some of these slides and most of these numbers before, but being that this is a public hearing, I want to make sure that we go through these and uh, cover our, our full view of our nineteen, twenty budget. So looking at the consolidated summary of funds, uh, the total budget for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty is ninety-three million, one hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars. When you look at the fund balances, um, all of our fund balances are in a positive. Uh, we didn't start the budget process like that, but we've been able to continue to work at this so that all of our fund balances at the end of twenty twenty end in positive manner. When you look at all of the, the funds compared to where we are in our current adopted budget, um, our proposed twenty twenty budget actually is less than our adopted twenty nineteen budget. Uh, for the base, it's right at ninety million and then we have three point one million of new decision packets that was requested in the twenty twenty budget. Uh, the general fund with the total of thirty-one million in revenue and thirty-two million in expenses, uh, we propose and project that will end the twenty twenty year at a twenty-one percent fund balance. You look at the revenues for the general fund at thirty-one million, thirty-two percent of that is from property tax. Uh, that dollar is based on the proposed property tax at the rollback rate, and then thirty-four percent from sales tax. Uh, the other uh, large area would be the franchise at thirteen percent. The general fund expense side at thirty-two million, uh, thirty-two percent of the general fund is the police department, followed by the fire department at twenty-three percent and the general government at nineteen. The total of the water and sewer fund, uh, we project that we should finish twenty twenty at a twenty-four percent fund balance. Again, that's not where we first started this, so I've worked with Greg on CIP projects and so forth uh, to get where we need to be in the fund balance for this fund. The drainage fund, I'm glad that uh, this fund had a bit of attention tonight already because this is a fund that I wanted to draw your attention to, where we project that we'll finish twenty twenty at only an eight percent fund balance in this fund. Um, while we don't want to stop making improvements through our CIP projects, we definitely can't sustain this rate uh, with the expenses that are coming out of this fund. Um, I would highly recommend that whenever we do our rate study this next year for some of our utilities, that this fund be included in a rate study so that we can make sure we're at the, the correct rate for this drainage fund. This is just a recap of some of the CIP projects, we're about eight point five million in street reconstruction. Uh, the water and sewer capital projects is right at seven point three million, and then we had a total of almost one point eight million in the drainage capital projects. When looking at the city's total debt, this is a snapshot of the total debt service payments that we will make in the year twenty twenty, um, and that gives you all the series of debt issues that we've had. And as you recall, the twenty nineteen uh, GO actually went to the voters and so the debt service payment in just twenty nineteen for that one particular uh, item is two million dollars for a total payment of eight point four million dollars for total city debt. Our fee schedule was pretty simple this year, uh, we've not asked for increases in any of the utility funds. Uh, some of these are just deletions uh, at the rec center because we did away with the weight room, uh, workout facility and so any fees related to that, we are just removing from the, the fee schedule. So you see that here, uh, as well as there, and then there are just a few items that Christie has requested a, an increase uh, in the rates. Again, most of the building permit fees were changed uh, about a month or so ago, uh, and then this is what's remaining uh, for permit fees regarding grading permits. And then we have uh, a deletion in permits and fees and we also have just some minor changes for the library. And that's all I have on the budget portion of, of this at this point, Mayor, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I see none from Councilmembers, so at this time, this item for public hearing. I will open public hearing at seven thirty, anyone in audience would like to speak again this agenda. Propose FY twenty twenty budget, please state your name, welcome here sir.
Good evening, uh, Charlie Roberts, thank you. First off, I don't know how many uh, ways I can say, y'all guys must feel like Santa Claus, so many people asking for so much. Uh, looking over the budget, I just had a week to look it over and I can imagine what you guys have had trying to decipher all of that. Um, but some things that came to mind, like looking at the, if I could interpret it correctly, looking at the debt page, like fifty million dollars in debt for total debt, and the interest paid is like nine million? And so that comes to like twenty-five percent interest on your bond, on, on your debt services page, would that be correct? Y'all could talk back, right? No? Oh, really?
Rec? Sedana?
I can get the total for you, uh, you wouldn't be able to add the interest in all one column together. I can get you the average interest because each individual debt is a different percentage, but it's nowhere near twenty-five, it's, most all of them are less than five percent.
I thought the cumulative of it was like fifty-one point something million and then interest was just under ten million and then the total was like sixty-one something?
Ma'am, can you uh, approach the microphone so people can hear, plus we can record?
Yeah, and, and I did show a few more of the debt slides in previous meetings and I'd be glad to, to analyze that a bit more for you at the, the next meeting on the debts.
Okay, and we'll talk about people asking for things like just basically looking over it, like the vehicles. Consider, will that benefit us, like I looked at the park thing and I wanted crew cab trucks, twenty-five hundreds? But they want a truck for every employee because they only sent one employee out on a job? So if they had to have one truck and employee, why does it have to be a crew cab? Why can't it be a smaller, less expensive truck? I'm just looking at things like that, so as y'all figure out this budget, you know, whatever it is that you guys decide to, to give and to approve, now the rest of us guys to pay for that. It's like some of the debt I seen on here is carried over till twenty thirty-three before some of the already in crude debt is paid off. So, you know, those are just things, I know y'all have had plenty of time to look at, just treat us, treat us nicely as much as you can. Thank you.
Thank you sir, anyone else? I see none, so I go ahead, closing public hearing at seven thirty-three for item number four. At this moment, Councilmember, you have any question or comment, if you don't, this item, uh, Ms. Wee? Okay, this item ready for motion if you have no question.
Thank you Mayor, uh, for ordinance zero, uh, oh dash two zero one nine dash zero two four dash zero three. On the first reading, I make a motion, we approve it, uh, with the second reading and adoption of the budget being scheduled on September ninth.
Okay, welcome aboard Mr. Water, can you hear me? Are you uh?
Cannot hear you.
Yeah, yeah, I want to look at your face. Okay. Can you hear me now sir?
I can hear you.
Yeah, did you know, uh, we are moving motion for item number four? Are you uh, votes, yes, I mean, we have a uh, motion right now, but we need second. You want to be a second or anyone else? Okay, Mr. Watercrow will be second, okay, Resha, your vote please, how you vote sir?
Positive.
Number one means yes, right? Okay, thank you. Okay, with uh, Mr. Waterrow onboard, we have unanimous approval on item number four for first reading, thank you. And now we move to item number five, proposed FY twenty twenty tax rate. Go ahead ma'am, for first reading.
Thank you Mayor.
I just want to review again, uh, the many different taxing entities that make up an actual tax bill. Uh, so the city receives only twenty-four percent of the total tax that are collected from the taxing entities. We're the school district at fifty-four percent, we have the college district at five percent, hospital district at eight percent, and then Tarrant County at nine percent. This is a recap again of our property value, uh, with the proposed tax rate at point six six five seven six, which is seven hundred and thirty dollars average tax to the taxpayer. This just shows that same information in a chart form, which will show you the value versus the tax rate. It also gives you an idea of what's occurred over the past few years. When looking at the actual property tax division, as all of you know, there is a maintenance and operations portion of the tax rate and there is a interest in sinking, which is the INS or debt portion. We are actually looking at a lower maintenance and operation tax rate over last year, the increases on the debt side. And again, to remind you, that was uh, that did go to the voters and the voters approved that uh, for the, the debt that was issued, which is part of this. This again recaps seventeen, eighteen and nineteen tax rate. It also shows you, um, where we are at point six five three versus the effective rate of point six three five one one versus the rollback rate and proposed rate of point six six five seven six. The rollback rate is an increase of one penny over the current tax rate, uh, which brings in an additional three hundred, two thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars more in revenue. To review what Senate Bill Do will do for us next year, uh, we project values will continue to increase. If the values in- If the values increase to ten percent in 2020, now keep in mind, this year's increase was thirteen point five percent. When those values increase, rates decrease. So if we took all of that into account for next year, we are projecting that our tax rate will be somewhere around point six one one two one zero. Even with the increased ten percent in total values, that would only produce a hundred and, almost a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for us. And as you know, that's not a lot of money. It's not enough to even cover insurance increases or employee increases. It's important to understand where our property tax per household payment is in comparison to surrounding areas. When looking at our household tax, we're at about seven hundred and sixteen dollars at the current tax rate. Again, that would be seven hundred and thirty dollars at the proposed tax rate compared to some of our neighbors such as Ulyss, Keller, North Richland Hills, Bedford, Watauga, and Colleyville. So we are forced to do pretty much the same as far as operations and business with less revenue. We're a community that cares about our seniors, and when looking at our over sixty-five exemption, we are a very generous city to our seniors. In fact, we give forty-six percent, our fifty thousand dollars exemption value to our seniors, just forty-six percent of our total average value. It's quite a bit more than some of our neighbors. And all of our neighbors, of course, have higher values. And just as a reminder, something that was discussed in a previous meeting, we do have more sixty-five and over exemptions than we do homestead exemptions. We also have sixty percent of our values that are valued at one forty-nine, nine ninety-nine or less. And something that I've not shown you, you all, that I thought was really important was to to take an example snapshot of one of our citizens that's over sixty-five and kind of understand what it means to them when we increase the tax. So this is a true account of one of our seniors in our community. All of this is public record and can be found on the TAD website. So this is a snapshot of a senior whose home is valued at one oh three, eight oh five, which is very similar to our average. And I just want to kind of explain the information here. So if you look in the first column, this is Haltum City Tax that this individual has paid from two thousand and one, which is at the top, all the way to current, two thousand and eighteen, which is at the bottom of the column. You see what portion they're paying to Tarrant County, JPS Health, TCC College District, the Birdville ISD, and then the total tax bill. So when a senior is capped or frozen, when we increase the tax rate, it will not increase the tax rate of the seniors. And as you can see here, this individual has never paid more than one oh nine ninety-two for the entire year on their tax roll. In fact, if you look at their total tax roll, they're actually paying less now than they were in two thousand and one as a total. So it's a pretty reasonable deal to receive all the city services that this individual does for the low cost of one oh nine ninety-two per year. Again, why would we want to adopt the rollback rate? Just to recap, we've, it will have no impact to seniors who are sixty-five and older that are at a tax freeze. We've not requested utility rate increases this budget year. Adopting the rollback rate is going to decrease the deficit in the general fund by that additional revenue. And again, with Senate Bill Two going into effect next year, this is the last year to increase by eight percent because we have that three and a half percent cap next year on the maintenance and operations side. And we're expecting that maintenance and operation to drop from point four one three seven to point three six oh four next year. And again, just to recap, we also expect that the rollback rate or voter approval rate will be at point six one one two next budget year. And again, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Let's go back to the one of the NVO account, you're right there.
Yes, sir.
That, I am in shock that they only one oh nine, Haltum City Tax. And with all the service that this person got or this family got, who paid for the loss in there? Is the business here or, you know, our budget or what? Would you explain for public?
For, who pays for the loss? I'm sorry.
You know, like each household or each person live in the city. I mean, they consume the, the money from tax for street maintenance, drainage, for everything.
Sure.
And that to cover that, who paid for that?
Yeah, so the other citizens would pay for that, and as I showed on this previous slide, if I can go back there for a moment for you. This is the average tax per household. So if the average household is paying seven thirty, that money's not coming from your seniors. I've also reached out to the county, and they're pulling some numbers for me. They're going to give me the number of seniors that pay zero in property tax due to the exemptions in average value. And I hope to have that information for you.
I mean, you look at the total of five hundred eighty-one ninety-four, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, the total tax includes school, the Tarrant County Hospital, lesser than the internet for you, you correct?
Yes, sir.
And I believe a lot of people are still screaming about want to load the tax now. And I think if the people look at the presentation from you should thinking twice, you know? We need the money to operate the city. So the people enjoy the luxury of five hundred eighty-one dollar here, you know? And should appreciate whatever the citizen in here put their tax to cover for the loss because average is seven hundred thirty dollars, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. I just want the public to know that, Mr. Phil.
No, the seven hundred and thirty dollars that you're talking about.
Average.
Well, is the, in this column where it says a hundred and nine. So the average, the average citizen can be paying seven thirty, but in this case, the senior's paying one oh nine.
Just for the city tax.
That's just for the city tax, yes. Now, if you go over and the, the average taxpayer with everything in, in the grand total, that would be much higher. So, so what I'm saying is the seven thirty, average taxpayer per city taxes would be in a one oh nine, right?
The reason I ask you a question because you look at Haltum City compared with our city. That's what the reason why we cannot make the city move compared with our neighbor. But I wish, you know, we still have the senior citizen, but the best we can. And thank you for you and the staff have done a good job, especially the presentation today will show the people. If they want this information, they can come here, make a copy, and go home and compare it, right?
Yes, sir.
Public record. Thank you, ma'am. Council, you have any question? My God, what did you do? Nobody have question. Now, this item number six is, number five, we have public hearing, and anyone, I, I open the public hearing at seven forty-seven, and anyone in audience would like to speak against this item. I see none, and I will close public hearing at seven forty-eight. Now, this item number five, Ms. Crowe, you have any questions, sir? You have any question? Or comment? I can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
No, okay. Okay, no comment. This item number five, ready for a motion.
Motion.
Ms. Wee, go ahead, sir.
There we go. In regards to ordinance O dash two zero one nine dash zero two zero dash zero three, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point six six five seven six, which is effectively a three percent increase in the tax rate. Also, the second reading will be done on September ninth.
First reading, first. Okay. We need a second. Ms. Crowe?
I'll second.
Ms. Crowe will be second. Okay, if you have no more question, please Rashad, you vote. How you vote, Ms. Crowe? Yes, number one? Okay. Item number five, and Marion, Hillary, can you vote, ma'am? Hit the button. Thank you. And item number five is unanimous approval. Thank you. Now we move to number six, your turn, Mr. Bachelor, on the P dash oh oh two dot nineteen for the plat.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'd like to combine agenda item number six and seven together. It is a preliminary and final plat, but I will need two motions on it. This is to conduct a public hearing and consider action on the application of Suzie Lim for preliminary plat and final plat on lot one, block one of the Lim Edition located in the C three commercial district locally known as forty-five twenty-seven East Bellknap Street. There was a building that was demolished on this property, it was the Rex Grove Machine Company. Once the previous building was demolished, any new building permit would require a property to be platted, so that's why we're here tonight. On August thirteenth, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval of P double oh two nineteen. Other than discretionary matters for the council, the application is administratively complete and meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, so it is recommended that council approve the preliminary and final plat tonight. If we look at the screen up here. It's the wrong, they're out of order. This is the next case, so let me thumb through it real quick. Okay, this is the property here on Bellknap, right here, and it is a vacant lot at this point. This is the preliminary, excuse me, final plat. And this is a site plan showing what they're proposing. It's a seven tenant little strip center. They did get a little bit of landscape variance of five feet, so there'll be a ten-foot landscape buffer as opposed to fifteen, meet the parking requirements, and it will be a masonry constructed building. This is facing north from Bellknap, facing south across the street, to the east on Bellknap, and to the west. If you have any questions, I'm available, and the applicant is also here.
Council, you have any question? Do you want to do the second one too, then?
It's all the same presentation, I just need two motions.
Yeah, same presentation, both of them, and, okay. Ms. Wee, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Glenna?
Yes.
I remember a long time ago, when I first got into voluntary and city politics, there was something about a Bellknap project possibly coming down the road, like they're looking at studies and stuff like this.
The Bellknap overlay?
Yeah.
Envision Bellknap.
Yeah, does this kind of fall in that line?
It falls in very well with this on, as far as redevelopment.
Thank you.
And Ms. Thompson?
Yes, looking at the neighboring properties, there was no rejections or anything correct.
Let me look at the mailbacks. We had four in favor, none opposed, none returned to sender. So everybody's on board with redevelopment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Crowe, you have any questions, sir?
No.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Testing one two.
I couldn't hear.
He has no question.
Okay. Next time I have to say, can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Okay. By the way, at this time, I will open, open the public hearing at seven fifty-two. Anyone in audience would like to speak against this item? Number six and number seven, I want to correct that Mr. Bachelor already make a presentation for both items six and seven on the final plat together. I see none of public hearing, so I.
We need to vote on each separately.
Yeah. I will close the public hearing at seven fifty-three, and we need to, item number six, it ready for motion? Go ahead. Ms. Thompson, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to accept P dash zero zero two dash one nine as the preliminary plat at location forty-five twenty-seven East Bellknap Street.
And for, oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Wees, go ahead.
For a second.
Okay, we got the second. Anyone have any question or comment? If you don't, go ahead, Rashad, you vote please. For item number six, only. Ms. Row, I saw you number one, thank you, yeah. By the way, item number six passed unanimously. Thank you. And now we vote for item number seven. Ms. Wee, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven, P dash zero zero two dash one nine, final plat at forty-five twenty-seven East Bellknap, I make a motion, we approve.
Thank you, we got the motion, and now second, Mr. Van Zin.
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. If you don't have any more question, go ahead, Rashad, you vote please. One or two?
Um, yes.
Thank you. Item number seven unanimously passed. And Ms. Bachelor, you go number eight, ordinance number O dash two zero one nine dash zero one two one dash fifteen. Go ahead, ma'am.
That works so well, let's bundle the next two together because they're for the same property.
Yes.
The first case is a rezone at twenty-two forty Carson. To give you a little history, in nineteen ninety-six, the city initiated a rezone due to the thoroughfare club plan from M one to C two. The building that's there was constructed in nineteen ninety-eight, and since two thousand and six, his zoning ordinance rewrite, there had been no contractor's offices in the C two zoning allowed. Now, this property owner did have some COs historically before that time of contractor's offices, but not since the zoning rewrite. So that's one of the reasons that he wants to rezone it from C two to C three, because that allows plumbing, electrical, and mechanical by right to be there, but a contractor's office with shop and garage requires a conditional use permit, which is agenda item number nine in front of you. So again, I will need two different motions, one for the rezone and one for the conditional use permit. If we look at the screen up here, this is the property, and it's a seven tenant bay office warehouse situation. It does line up with the club on B and C three. This is facing the building. Again, it's bay shop, office, office bay alternating. This is the plans from when it was constructed. If you notice, these are landscape areas that were supposed to be at the approaches on for Granton and Carson. That is written into the exhibit for the CUP, and the owner is willing to comply with that. This is the front elevation from the plans when it was constructed. This is facing north and south on Carson Street, facing east and west. And this is a comparison of what's allowed in green and what would be a conditional use between the C two and C three according to the matrix. And if you notice on here, that a contractor's office with shop requires a conditional use in C three, it is not allowed in C two, which is its current zoning. And then on the C two for a plumber and mechanical, it's not allowed in C two, but it, both of them are permitted in C three. These are some historical codes violation pictures, and so we built into the exhibit not to have outdoor storage behind the building. If you have any questions, I'm available, and the property owner is also here.
Council, you have any question? Ms. Crowe?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, no questions.
Thank you.
I'm happy that you could hear me now.
At this time, we have no question or comment. At this time, we have no question or comment from counsel. Now we have, Ms. Thompson, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, here again, the notifications fourteen were sent out to the property owners. Since we've had code violations that you were showing historically, was there any comments or anything from any of the other property owners?
Uh, two in favor, one opposed, and one returned to sender. The opposition didn't have any comments on his mailback.
No. Okay. And also, with the changes, if we are inclined to do that, the property owner is aware of the parking and about the vehicles that he used, service vehicles, the proper storage and things of the items?
Yes. In fact, we did build in there, since Carson was widened, since the building was constructed, pretty much you park right at the right of way. So there's going to be some curb stops along Carson. Again, the landscaping that was not provided per the approved site plan, and then not to hopefully have any code issues with that back storage area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Thompson, Ms. Wees, go ahead, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. I, Glenna, where is that one opposed in relation to the property? So there was one...
On Monita, to the east.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Crowe, you have any questions, sir?
No, sir.
No, thank you. At this time, I will open public hearing at seven fifty-nine on the item number eight. Is anyone in audience would like to speak against this item? I have seen none, so I will close the public hearing at seven thirty, I mean, seven fifty-nine and a half. Okay. And now this item, ordinance number O dot two zero one nine dot zero two one dot fifteen, ready for motion. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. This would be moving to accept ordinance number zero, or, oh, excuse me, two zero one nine dash zero two one dash one five, also known as Z dash zero zero five dash one nine. First reading to rezone. The location is at twenty-two forty Carson Street.
Thank you, ma'am. And Ms. Susan Salt?
Thank you, Mayor, that would be for a second.
Okay. You have any comment or question? I see none, so go ahead, rush your vote, please. Ms. Crowe? Yes?
I'm positive.
Okay. Ms. Marion? I'm sorry, you're a little bit slow. I'm quick, okay. This item number eight, or number nine, number eight, I'm sorry, number nine unanimously passed. Now we go number ten. No, number nine, I'm sorry. Number eight, now number nine, the ordinance number O dot two zero one nine dot zero two two dot fifteen, ready for motion. And, Mr. Van Zandt? We already have public hearing for both?
Mayor, I can't remember if you opened the public hearing for both or just the one.
Okay.
Why don't you open it again, just to make sure?
That's why we need to see the attorney, okay? Correction, at this time, no pressure for your vote yet, so I open public hearing for this item number nine at eight oh two. Is anyone in the audience would like to speak against this agenda? I have seen none, so I close public hearing at eight oh three. And now, this item, ready for motion.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to accept ordinance number zero dash two zero one nine dash zero two two dash one five, also with CU dash zero zero four one nine, for a conditional use permit, also known as twenty-two forty Carson Street.
First reading?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Now, Ms. Susan Salt?
That would be for a second, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We got the second now, rush your vote, please. Okay. You work with a young man like me, you need to move fast, okay? By the way, the item number nine unanimously approved, and now we go to number ten. That would be me. And at this time, the audit committee appointments, we need one person, so I am, would like to nominate Mr. Brent Wees to be the member of the audit committee. And anyone have question against him or anything like that? If you don't, go ahead. This item, ready for motion.
Well, you need to... You have to, you have to get three and an alternate.
No, we got? No. I thought only one empty one.
This guy, he keeps tracking the board of auditions.
Oh, that, you thought, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mayor, I would suggest, I would suggest you have one for Brent Wees, and just take a vote on that. And then if we're, I would suggest go ahead and make for two other members and one alternate. And if anyone wants to join Mr. Wees on this, they could volunteer, and that would make it easy for you, too.
Okay, I volunteered.
Okay, go ahead. You can do it all at once. You guys, another one would be Marion Hilliard.
Okay, you are, Ms. Hilliard?
Hey, Walter wants to be on there, correct?
What? Walter, you volunteering?
I volunteer.
Yes?
You got Marion Hilliard, Brent Wees, and Walter Grow, and you need one alternate.
One alternate. That's me and, okay?
Gay Van Zandt. Okay, and they could just take a vote on these, on these applications.
You see, I'm a rookie mayor, so sometime make mistake, and need to learn, okay? Thank you. By the way, at this time, I would like to nominate the audit committee board members. First, Mr. Brent Wees. Second, Counsel Marion Hilliard. The third one will be Counsel Walter Grow, and alternate will be Gay Van Zandt. And this, ready for motion.
Someone to make a motion to approve those appointments, just, Susan?
Counsel, Ms. Salt?
I move to accept the appointments of the audit committee of Brent Wees, Marion Hilliard, Walter Grow, and alternate Gay Van Zandt.
Thank you, ma'am. And, Ms. Thompson?
That would be for a second.
Okay, we got a second, go ahead, rush your vote, please.
Walter Grow says aye.
Okay, item number ten unanimously approved. And now we move to item number eleven, Mr. Camacho.
Okay, Mayor and Council, as you know, there was a passing of House Bill twenty-eight forty by the Texas Legislature, which, and City Council would have to amend section two point two of the Code of Ordinance of Holtham City by revising the requirements for presentations for citizens during council meetings. We have a form for citizens to fill out prior to the meeting to allow them to address the council regarding agenda items. And the agenda also lists a visitor citizen forum to allow citizens to speak on non-agenda items in the same form has been used on both circumstances. But basically, what the law is stating, that citizens are allowed to address every agenda item, and the council will determine on how they want to situate this by revising their agenda, I mean, excuse me, by revising the current ordinances that we have toward this.
At this time, we would like to have anyone have question or comment, and if not, this item, ready for motion. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to accept ordinance O two zero one nine dash two three dash oh one, amending the citizens' presentation with these exceptions, please. That this is for agenda items that will not include public hearing. So it will be for all other items, but the public hearing will be at that time during the agenda. Also, on section E, and this is in two point two, we would like to take out the wording per agenda and make it for agenda and eliminate the non-agenda item. And also, this will not include media items, except for present, excepted for presentation during the citizens' forum. And then, moving on to F, there's two corrections. This would be for the non-agenda item that would be allowed two minutes, and also doing the same, eliminating per and putting for. Allow indiscretion.
Any more, ma'am?
That's all that I have.
Okay, Ms. Wee?
We also, I could do a second on that, but I also want to make sure we add on the form itself, item number four, we have, where we're putting, you will be able to address the public agenda items at that time, not during the visitor citizen forum, as we discussed in executive session.
Counsel, everything good? Okay.
I'm good, second.
Thank you, sir. Okay. This item already has second, and now rush for your vote, if you don't have any question or comment. Okay, item number eleven, ordinance number O dot two zero one nine dot oh two three dot zero one unanimously passed. Thank you. First reading. And now, we move to number twelve, Board of Commission, ordinance amendment. Ms. Camacho?
Well, since the last time this, last time this agenda item, it was tabled, and there was a lot of discussion on certain items that the council had questions on, so we would just go ahead and open it up to see where they wanted to go ahead and make the changes. It was tabled at the last meeting, August twelfth, but there were some changes that they wanted to do regarding... Well, I'll just, I'll just let the council and several of them, let them go ahead and state the changes they wanted to put in this for what they had from the previous ordinance.
Okay, this item, Ms. Lynn Thompson, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. I would like to move that we accept ordinance O dash two one nine dash zero one eight dash oh one, amending the board and commission's ordinance. Several items have already been changed. I would like to go to section D and make exceptions to this, where we're talking about twelve months residency. There would be exception for the animal advisory and the TERS board. I would like that noted in that. And also, going on down to section two dash three seven, terms of office, I would like to eliminate the last sentence, the maximum number of terms for service on a board or commission is five to your terms. And I would like to add to that, that service boards, such as beautification, the library, parks and rec and fire services board, shall have the authority to appoint or not advisory board members as they wish. Advisory board members have no voting privileges, and they're not counted as a qualm or have attendance requirements. And then, I would also like to add in section two three nine that, along with the dress code, that any board or commission that conducts business in council chambers must vote by electronic system. On first reading.
Thank you. And, Ms. Wee?
Ask for a second.
Thank you. We got the second now, rush for your vote, please, counsel. Okay, item number twelve unanimously approved. Thank you. And first reading. And now the city staff report, Mr.?
We're good.
No, you're good? Okay, this time we don't have them. How about future agenda item? Any counsel have anything to put on next one? No? Man, everything done good. Thank you. And now Board of Commission, resignation of Board of Commission or community member. Anyone have any resignation? I see none. How about appointed or reappointed, the board and member? Okay, we got Ms. Wees, go ahead, sir.
I just want to let it right now. I will have my library and my P and Z for the next meeting. I've got, I've gone through all the volunteer packets we've gotten and narrowed it down to some people. I'm going to be making some calls. So I'll hopefully have those for September ninth meeting. It's for the library and the P and Z. And the library. I'll have my appointments for next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Ms. Marion Hilliard? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, on the animal advisory committee, from a council perspective, we've made all of our appointments. The only one left is made by the city staff. So unless they say differently, Kevin Cleveland will continue to serve as the member. Right?
That's correct, ma'am. Kevin Cleveland. Kevin.
Okay, counsel, please rush your vote. Okay, unanimously approved for Kevin to be served on the board of the animal control. And by the way, any more appointment or reappointment? I see none. So now, accused, absent, now Ms. Crowe here, we don't have them, right? Attending requirement. At this time, we have no executive session, right? You don't have more? Okay, we have no more executive session, so I will adjourn this meeting at eight fifteen. Thank you, everyone. Good night, and see you next time. Good night, thank you. Hey, buddy? What's up, man? Hey buddy, what's up there?